Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to item number 14. Stage 2 drought update. Mr. Hagmark, whenever you're ready.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Joshua Hagmark, the Acting Water Resources Manager, and I'm here to give the November stage 2 drought update. As you may recall, our update in October was rather lengthy, and so I've tried to cut down on the size of this presentation to help move things along, but I do want to underscore, if you do have questions, please ask, and I'd be happy to go into more detail on those. As part of our presentation today as well, we have Jill Zachary, the Assistant Director, here today to talk about what we're doing in the parks and give an update on the impacts to our street trees. So the overview looks long, but the sections go quickly. Weather forecasts, we look into water supply outlook, talk a little bit about Lake Kachuma status and what's changed since we last spoke. Supplemental water, what's changed in that area. There was a request for an update on the groundwater modeling work that we're doing with USGS. A little update on the drought response capital, where we are with conservation efforts, and, as I mentioned, Parks and Recreation's drought response effort. So the national weather forecast for the next three months is for a weak El Nino, which translates to equal chances of above, normal, and below-average rainfall. Is that clear? Basically, they have, at this point, not a lot of information to make any predictions that would help us with our water supply planning, and so we continue to hope for the best and assume the worst. And we continue to make progress in that area. The rainfall, there is no substantial rainfall forecasted through the end of November at this point, and I think I've mentioned this in past drought updates, even if a strong El Nino were to materialize, historically, we've seen 116% of normal rainfall during an El Nino, so again, not enough that would end this drought. So we will definitely need to see more than the historic response to an El Nino. So the monthly demands, pleased to respond to our report that the community met the target of 20% for this month. As you may recall, the summer months, we've hit 24%, 25%, and 26% conservation. The community's done a great job, and as we kind of predicted, it's going to get a little more difficult as we move into these cooler months. The graphic here, the green line depicts the plan, that's our normalized water, that's what we would expect in just a rolling, a normal year, what we would expect in water usage. The gray line is for water year 2013, and we put that on there because the state wants us to report how we're doing in comparison to that month. That was just what they chose as their benchmark, because every other agency does it differently. However, for us, I think it's more critical that we do it off of our plans, that's how we do our water supply planning, and so we're looking for 20% below our planned projection. The reduction for October was, as you may recall, October was extremely warm. We saw, you know, I don't know about you guys, I've never turned my heater on in October. It was very warm throughout the month, and what we saw was, you may recall, we do water budgeting, so for users, it's based on the actual weather. For some of our ag users and Parks and Rec, it's based on the actual weather conditions, and so they were actually allocated more water because of the warm weather, and they all stayed, we had primarily stayed within their tier 1 water usage, so they stayed within that core water that we expect them to stay in. It was just, a lot of it was related to the weather that we saw in October. So here's our supply strategy that I've shown several times. We are currently in water year 4, which started October 1st. You see a very diverse supply that we are relying on in this water year. We have sufficient water to meet the needs of this community going forward for this year, as long as we can get that 20% conservation that we're asking for from the community. Lake Kachuma status, I gave a pretty lengthy report.
Yeah, you know, one thing occurs to me, and looking at that chart, we've seen it so many times, it's always helpful, but is it possible to put years ahead on there too, just so we can graphically see what it is that we would be doing? And, you know, in terms of six-year planning, we're in the middle of that, let's look ahead six years from now and see what that looked like and assume the worst. And I think it'll look very scary, and that will probably serve a purpose, so that'd be helpful, I think, in the future.
Year 7, oh no.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, it's exactly that. Well, we certainly could add probably a year or so, but I wouldn't, a lot of it gets just so speculative when you get too far out, and we certainly could add another year to take a look at that, but as we've discussed in the last presentations, you really start to see our groundwater disappear, and if we continue to hold these same projections here, things just get more dire, and I don't know that that's really fair to project out at this point. We've already taken some pretty conservative assumptions here, but it gets, certainly when we start talking about no rain, no reservoir inflows, it's not a pretty picture.
Well, I think his point is, we want to look at the not-so-pretty picture, right? Right, so, just, I think that was the point, right?
So just to clarify on that, I would imagine if we got out to that kind of future, that we would take full advantage of the full capacity of our D cell facility. Okay.
And I guess that's really my point, is to show that we do have a plan, even going out that far, and it gets very strained, and we're going to have to have more than 20% conservation, but I think that's helpful to understand. If you did this chart in some of the other jurisdictions that don't have the potential to have a D cell plant, they don't have a chart for year 7, and I think that's something that's important for the public to know.
Sure, our facility does have the ability to ramp up to 10,000 acre feet. We're seeing currently, with conservation at 20%, we're seeing the community down a little over 11,000, so it would be possible to sustain most of the quality of life that we currently enjoy, even with an extended drought, so yes. Lake Kachuma status, we did a pretty lengthy presentation in October, so I kept this to the highlights. I just wanted to give a little update on, on October 6th, Kyle Trout filed a lawsuit against the Bureau for their operations of the pump station feeding water to Hilton Creek, which is a restoration area for Steelhead. The Bureau's operation of that had led to several takes of Steelhead, and in October or November, the CCRB board took action to participate in that lawsuit, as we envisioned water supplies could be a discussion during that lawsuit. Consultation on the fishwater releases, we had talked about last time, we were optimistic, the Bureau was in consultation with the Marine Fisheries. The reservoir had reached, as we understood it, the 30,000 acre-foot threshold for remaining project water, and unfortunately, we were not allowed to participate in that consultation, and the Bureau made the decision that the minimum pool, which is water that previously had been deemed difficult to treat, and at this point, we don't have a way of extracting that water, they had deemed that project water, which pushed our thinking that we were at 30,000 now to a little over 40,000 acre feet of project water remaining. Therefore, fishwater releases will continue at approximately 10 acre feet a day, or 300 acre feet a month, which is pretty significant. I showed this graphic last time, just kind of quantifying it, what, you know, currently there's about 60,000 acre feet of water remaining in Kachuma, but when you start to break down who owns what water and what's actually left in there, it's not a whole lot. We have about 13,000 acre feet of project water remaining. The member units are carrying forward just over 10,000 acre feet of water that we've saved by not using our full allocation, including the evaporative losses that we will see over this year. That's where we came up with the 30,000 acre feet that we believed was in the reservoir as of October. Now, the Bureau is now claiming this, a minimum pool is now also project water. There are further discussions I hope to be had on this topic, but that's what I have to report at this point.
So when you say "we," you mean all the member agencies, not just the city of Santa Barbara?
That's correct.
Okay, so our water there is a portion of that water?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
How much of it is our water?
To keep the presentation short, I reported in October how much of that was our water. I don't have that information in front of me, but roughly, it's about 3,000, a little 3,500 acre feet of this blue water here is ours for this next year, and then we're carrying forward about 3,500 in water that we've been able to save over the last few years, but just not using our full allocation. So current supply strategy, we're looking for 7,300 acre feet total for this year, out through year 6. We have purchased this last year approximately 3,000 acre feet, which allows us to meet this year's supplemental water. We are looking for water now in years 16 and 17, and so that's what we'll be pursuing. This little graphic here just kind of breaks down the water that we have secured this year, and I'm not going to go into detail, I reported on that in October, but ultimately, we're looking for just shy of 4,500 acre feet of water for the next, to meet our needs for the next two years. That is what our goal is going to be with CCWA, Central Coast Water Authority, who's our person at the table with the state as we look for additional supplies.
So if we are not able to secure all of that water, especially by the time the D cell plant, should we turn it on when we need to turn it on, turns on, will we be able to increase the capacity of the desalination plant to offset what we can't purchase? Or are we going to determine that depending on how much this outside water costs? I mean, there seems like there's a cost-benefit analysis of producing extra water through the D cell plant if it's already on versus purchasing water elsewhere, and how much that might actually cost to get to us.
Right, so, Madam Mayor, the approach we've taken here is very conservative, waiting to the last minute to really get this D cell facility online, and using as much supplemental water as we feel we could realistically purchase and import to try and delay the discussion for D cell, but ultimately, yes, we're looking to purchase for the next two years. If we're only able to get the next year, it just puts more pressure for us to find that additional water for year 6 before D cell comes online. But the facility that we currently are showing here is a 7,500 acre foot facility. We are planning on presenting to council in April, a facility that's smaller, and should these conservative projections end up coming true, we will have another chance to enlarge, to expand the facility, and that's part of what we've laid out in the RFP that we've given to the consultants, is a kind of a staged approach, so we can minimize the cost to the city for the initial startup.
Okay, so, okay, so there's the availability of it, but I guess I'm still not getting, there's a decision point of cost. So let's, looking at year 6 in 2017, the D cell plant's already on, and then there's additional water that if by 2017 we have not secured that water, we still need to purchase it, and if the purchase of that water is higher, the cost of that is higher than producing that through the D cell plant, we would be able to make that determination. Would we be able to be that nimble with the desalination plant?
About a year in advance, we'll be able to. Well, next winter, we would have another chance to make a modification, so if we didn't have much success, we may choose to go for the larger facility.
Or there's water available, but it costs a lot more than, right, we can make that decision at that point. Okay, all right, that helps, thank you. Now we've got some lights on, Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we have the purchased water, and as we speak, it is coming into Kachuma in substantial quantities, is that right? How much is that, like 30 acre feet a day or?
Yeah, 50 acre feet a day approximately is being delivered, and again, there's other users part of that, but yes.
Yeah, and then, so, just, we have that chart up there of Kachuma. What we're doing is sort of skimming that off the top, so to speak, as our daily use, so that's why it's not getting, showing up as a color on that chart. Would that be a reasonable way to put it?
Councilmember White, that's great. We are not allowed to store water in Kachuma, it's just mainly a conveyance, so as state water is delivered, it is immediately taken out, basically, and delivered to the city, and so that reduces how much Kachuma water we actually have to take. If we need to store water, we'd just store that in San Luis reservoir.
Mr. Hart?
I think we be asked this every month, where are we in the process of negotiating our allocation for the pipeline to bring water into Kachuma, our share versus the other purchasers of water? Is that date when everybody makes their reservation occurred? I think that's coming up soon, or has it just occurred?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, yes, the initial date, when everyone wanted to see what they were looking for, and everybody, as you would expect, put in that they wanted to utilize their full capacity of the pipeline. The final date is December 15th, when they will finalize the delivery schedule, and then after that, there's, we're anticipating there'll be a lot of changes, because there's not a lot of agencies that have acquired the water to actually fill the pipeline, and so as that time comes along, if they don't have water to fill the pipeline, they'll look to others who do have water to fill that need, and so hopefully, we'll be there with water in hand to have it delivered.
Okay, so that's going to evolve over time.
Yes.
The other question I had to do, had to do with, it's been brought to my attention that there is underground water in an aquifer north of the Gleta Water District that's in private ownership, it's ag land, and that the property owner and water owner is interested in selling that water for market prices, and I think there's been some letters exchanged between the Gleta Water District and that private property owner. I think the Montecito Water District is interested in potentially buying that water. I think we have inquired about it a little bit. Could you tell me more about what's going on with that? I think certainly there's a lot of, I know the Gleta Water District's very concerned about that, is that potentially may, they believe it affects their aquifer. What I have been told is that the private water aquifer owner doesn't believe that's the case, and it sounds like it's very ripe for a lawsuit, but can you tell us more about that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, yes, as you just described, it's a very complex relationship, and what they're currently asking to do is to do a pilot, basically to test the basin, to see how much impact it has on the Gleta adjudicated basin, and so in that testing phase, they are looking for who is interested. We see this as having some long-term interest, certainly for the city, not sure if it is going to provide any fruitful water for this drought. And I think we have a lot of other things that we're working on, and as you pointed out, this could easily end up in litigation and drag on, and no one sees a drop of water. And so I think we have taken this information as this could be a solid lead in the future, we're certainly interested, and certainly don't want Gleta Water to be negatively impacted, and feel there's ways that they can, that it can be managed so that they're not, but at this point, you know, just to get a, I think they're talking about 500 acre feet is what they would like to do for their pilot testing, and I think the idea of getting that online and getting that operating has a lot of hoops that they need to jump through, but I think long-term, it could have a real benefit to the South Coast if this proves to be a viable venture.
Well, I guess I would just add, you know, my view, that we should be assisting in that effort and adding our weight to that conversation. I think that it's a really unique opportunity, and it's water that isn't unsecured, well, it is unsecured, but it certainly doesn't involve all the complexities of transferring water through the delta and all those issues, and so if we need to engage with our partners in the Gleta Water District or something, if there needs to be some more regional conversations, you know, at the elected official level, I think that would be fruitful to know. I think there's the potential here where there are different interests between the different water agencies, and having a collective discussion of that was a good idea. I don't know if perhaps Mr. Francisco's already been involved in some of those conversations, but I'd like to know on a more regular basis what's going on with that, because it is a significant amount of waters, I understand. I mean, significant enough to where if this was available, we might be looking at a different decision about the D cell plant. So this is important to clarify, if it's possible to clarify, sooner rather than later.
You know, I hate to say this, but I think it's very intriguing. I have read through the report on the production and what they think it's capable of, and it's, be careful that it's, sounds too good to be true, but I'm just skeptical at this point, and certainly, we've been following this discussion. I know Montecito's interested in putting down some money on this to see the pilot work done. I'm just not certain it's the best venture for the city right now at this time. I think we still, there's a lot less litigation associated with purchasing supplemental water outside of the area, but long-term, I do think we should spend some time to develop and see where this can go, as it could provide a local source. Particularly, what I'm looking for is a place for us to bank water during wet years that we could then rely on during dry times. Yeah. So just to wrap up the supplemental water program, for this fiscal year, we have $3.5 million for water purchases. FY '16 budget includes another $3 million to continue to pursue water. Request for supplemental water in FY '15, we currently are anticipated to ask for 4,500 acre feet, so we will be one of the largest, if not the largest, requester in CCWA asking for water. Currently, there's no water purchases are available. The market will start to heat up probably in January and through May, that's basically when things need to be, you need to seal your deals, and then the water, basically, will get delivered through the end of the calendar year next year. So that's why we're buying water in anticipation of the following year, is really how the supplemental water program works. So our strategy is to continue to maximize deliveries to Lake Kachuma. We are going to reserve as much capacity in the pipeline as we think is reasonable to anticipate, which is right now is between 3,300 and 4,500 acre feet in this calendar year. We're going to focus on securing water needed in calendar year 16 and 17, continue to pursue water purchases the opportunities become available, and if water purchases exceed our budget of $3.5 million, staff will return to council for discussion about that. At this point, we don't know what the cost of water is going to be. Last year, we were able to secure all the water that we were looking for for under $3 million, and so we had some money we rolled forward to this year. So if the market gets out of control next year, we might, in 2015, then we might come back and have that discussion of whether we should be pursuing and what the costs So there was a question about the work that was being done by the USGS on their groundwater modeling. Basically, they're building on the work that was completed in 1998, and the goal of this model was to allow us in the future to start to better understand the flows in our basin and how we could best utilize the, maximize the basin. Part of their modeling, we'll take a look at where the seawater barrier is and how maybe pumping with different frequency of different wells will impact that seawater barrier. Remember, it's, maybe it's pulsing our wells, we want to do that, versus a constant pumping. Maybe there's a strategy of certain pumps in the groundwater basin that have less of an impact on seawater intrusion, and so that was, that's kind of the basis of this model, is to kind of help us with that. And as for the sustainable yield base, sustainable yield from the basin, we've, kind of a pretty good idea for the downtown basin, it's about 900 acre feet a year is the, just the natural recharge of that basin, and it's approximately 900 acre feet in the Foothill Basin. The challenge with the Foothill Basin is we're not the only pumpers in the Foothill Basin, so it's kind of diluted. There is, Lacunre Mutual has a well, and there's a lot of other private wells as well in the Foothill Basin. So ultimately, this tool can kind of be helped to help us best manage that basin and kind of predict how we can maximize the yield out of it. This, it's basically a two-year contract that USGS has been working on. They've completed the first four phases of that work, and they're kind of working on their last phase right now, and their final product, they're expecting sometime in April of 2015, is what their latest schedule update to us was. So I just wanted to recap on the groundwater workload. Right now, as you know, we've been kind of struggling with our wells, there's a lot of maintenance that needs to be done, and so we're looking to maximize production of all of our existing wells, but we're also looking to replace wells at the end of their useful life, and so that's our main focus right now. Once we feel like we've got a good handle on that, then we can start looking for where we might drill other wells. We've have in the past looked at putting wells in Storage Unit 1, which underlies the city, further up in the basin, and unfortunately, our most recent exploration into that, one at the high school, yield poor water quality and a pretty low production, and we also had a well up near Cottage Hospital that yielded really poor water quality. So it seems there's kind of this sweet spot of where the wells need to be, and they're basically between Alameda Park and City Hall is kind of the sweet spot for our wells.
Mr. White has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Back to your point about 900 acre feet per year is a ballpark recharge capacity of Basin 1, but what that doesn't address is the, we don't withdraw our savings on an annual basis. Maybe we need to be doing, I know that's been a conversation over the years of how much do we save and how much do we take out per year, but what is the, what would be the total extraction capacity, rather than being per year? How many 900s are there in there that we could anticipate extracting?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, in a five-year period, we feel like we could remove about 16,000 acre feet from our two groundwater basins. I think the plan, now that we have the Ortega Groundwater Treatment Plan operating is, and after the basin recovers, I think is to remove the safe yield. That's ultimately what we're after, and I think the best management of the basin is to remove that safe yield every year. It won't have any negative impacts, but we certainly will be withdrawing more than the safe yield, at least for this year and the coming years until the drought's over.
And so you're talking about 1,500 acre feet per year extraction is what, I've forgotten back on the plan, what the number is, and the little colored chart here is so small, I won't be able to.
Oh, yeah, for this next year, it was, I think we're planning to get 2,300, it was limited by law. So the target this next year is about 2,300 acre feet, and we're going to continue, that's just based on, right now, our limit is getting our wells up and operating, and that projection goes up for next year, as well as we bring Alameda online.
To, to what, to 3,000?
It goes up to.
When Alameda's online, about 3,000.
Yeah.
From 2,300 next year to 3,000 when we get our system rehabilitated.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So quickly move through the recycled water project, the Valverde well, which we've been talking about for a long time. This is a non-potable well that will be supplementing our recycled water system, this, closing in on it, this will be starting up in December, and should produce about 300 acre feet a year. Trishery Treatment Plant marches along and should have that facility online this summer. The capacity of that system is about 1,400 acre feet. Right now, we have, there's a demand of about 1,100 acre feet, so we have about 300 acre feet of capacity built into this facility for future expansion, and we are actively looking for grants. We have looked at our facility and where we would expand it, and we're looking for grants that would pay for that. It's extremely expensive to extend the recycled water system, and so grants have been really the key to making that pencil out. We did receive notice, since the last time we met, that our grant got reduced down from 1.2 million to 1 million for the recycled water project. They rebalanced the awards and gave San Luis County more money than they previously got, and so both this and the Combe project received a reduction of about $200,000 each, so. Still a substantial amount of money, and still goes a long ways to helping us pay the $11 million to redo the facility. Here's the project picture, recent picture, still coming out of the ground. Groundwater well project highlights, just kind of quickly go through these. Alameda currently in design, as you may recall, that well failed, and so we're looking to replace that well. Bids came in last week, and we're working with the attorney's office right now. There are some irregularities, unfortunately, with those bids, and we're hoping that we can, there isn't significant irregularities such that we have to rebid. We're afraid if we have to rebid, it could delay the project significantly, because there are other uses in the park that it would conflict with construction. We were, under the current schedule, we were supposed to be in construction in January. We can still do that if we can resolve these bid irregularities. The high school well, internally, we're doing the design for the piping. We're piping that down to the Ortega Groundwater Treatment Plant. Water quality's not suitable to put directly into the system, and we will be coming to you probably soon with a contract for the wellhead improvements. Vera Cruz, we have a contractor scheduled to come out and make some electrical repairs that we've just been troubling, keeping that well operational. City Hall, I reported last time, we had a pump failure and a partial collapse. The pump there was pulling just a lot of sand out, and so we have a consultant right now who will be giving us a recommendation on moving forward with that. We are hopeful that we can at least get a pump put back in there and get some partial production out of that well, while we make plans to possibly re-drill that well. Corp Yard, some good news here, the, we are producing water from that well right now. The, we are producing water from that well right now, a pretty substantial amount, about 700 gallons a minute, one of our bigger producers in this area, and that's under like a temporary setup that we put in, and the final well should be done sometime in January, and we should be able to get about 900 GPM out of that once the final production is done. San Roque is currently online, and we're looking to do some operational adjustments to lower the pump to increase production. Hope Well is online, and we're looking to schedule a time when we can do some treatment of the well and possibly boost production there. And then, Los Robles, as I reported, has failed, and we're looking to get some minimum production out of that while we can, and start to schedule its replacement. Let's jump into the D-SAL project. On October 31st, we submitted our CDP application to the Coastal Commission. They have 30 days to respond with any additional information that they require. Scheduled to release of the RFP, it went out yesterday, and we have job walks with the three contractors who have been pre-qualified. Job walks are Thursday and Friday of this week, so we're moving quickly on that one. We will be coming to council in December to receive input on the D-SAL rate structure. We've had to make several changes to that, so it's been delayed till December. In January, our goal is to get back for approval of the rate notices, so we can get that mailed out in January. That needs to be 45 days before we have any public hearing on it. In February, we should get our proposals back from our design, build, operate contractors. There will be a selection process and negotiations leading up to possible award in April, and then we also have the rate hearing and adoption of rates in March. Lots of pieces in play, all dependent on the weather. Is there any questions on the D-SAL project at this point?
May I ask for a copy of the request for proposals? It's not in our packet, right?
Absolutely, yeah, it's a very comprehensive document, but we can certainly get you a link to that document.
I think I can handle it.
Yeah.
How many for different firms are we sending out the RFP to, approximately?
Councilmember Hart, we received five interest, five proposals or interest statements of qualification. We reviewed those and, and actually qualified three firms that we felt best matched the city's needs, and so, it's, it's going to be, the, all three firms are highly qualified. They've all done D-SAL facilities all over the world, so.
Can you send us those, the names of those firms to?
Absolutely.
Through email? Thank you.
So, the D-SAL project cost update, on September 23rd, we did an extensive update to the, with the council on the status of the project, and at that time, we reported that the estimate at that time was 32.4 million. It remains the estimate. However, and that estimate did include 20% construction contingency and included an estimate for the profit and risk that the contractor might put on top of it. Over the last month or so, we have had additional costs come in for the electrical and general conditions. We had a placeholder for those costs, but they came in higher than we expected. I'm not ready to say that the project is more than 32.4 million, but given the tight timeline and the lack of room for any type of delays, I'm suggesting that we use in the rate modeling 40 million as a, just a, an estimated figure there for noticing, but the final adopted rates would reflect the actual cost of award, and that's, we've just added so much construction contingency in there, I just feel that, I'm not convinced yet that the cost is really over 32 million at this point. Cone Pumping Project continues to be in standby. That's a good thing. The community along the South Coast have all been responding to the request to reduce water, and that has left a lot more water in the lake than we expected at this time, and so, the project sits there, ready. So, the cost for that project was about 6.1 million. We believe before grants are, the city's cost could be as high as 2.2 million, and then, we're waiting still, we should be coming in December to council for award of 500,000 from the State Water Resource Control Board and Department of Water Resources. They've had a grant that's specifically to the city, and then there was a larger IRWIP grant of 1 million that went to the entire project. So, once we've been assured of those grants, we'll return with a revised cost on this, but it's promising, it's headed in the right direction. So, has been some recent water main breaks, and I just wanted to talk briefly about those. Between the end of October and, I guess, the first week in October, we've had about five breaks, and four of those were main breaks, one was a service connection break, and you know when it comes down to it, it is, we do have some aging infrastructure out there, and what we find typically happens, and this is, it happens in Galida, it happens in Montecito, it happens in Carpinteria, when the weather changes, we had that kind of a little chill at the end of October there. The weather cools down like that, when the cold water moves into the pipes, and the metal expands and contracts differently, and that's all it takes to really push some of this aging pipe over the edge, and so, that's what was the main cause of the pipe breaks. We also do get pipe breaks from moisture. This, the soil's been so dry and starts to get some water in it, it expands and puts a little more stress on the pipe. So, we have had a few breaks. It's, it's, we do typically have main breaks, about 40 to 60 a year. It is rather high. We do have an aging system that needs a lot of attention. As you know, we've delayed the water main replacement program during the drought because just replacing mains requires a lot of water. You have to fill the pipes up, chlorinate them, pressure test them, dump that water, and so, for the sake of the drought, we have, you know, reroute, rerouted that money to help out with other drought-related projects, and the plan is to come back after the drought with an accelerated program to get back on track for the, for the years that we've, are not doing the, the main program. We're also looking at this, our current 1% to see if that's adequate, and so, we'll be making recommendations in the next year or so on what maybe we should do to reduce that main break history. At this point, I'm going to turn over to Madeline Ward, our Water Conservation Coordinator, to fill you in on the latest in conservation.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name's Madeline Ward. I'm the Acting Water Conservation Coordinator, and I just have a quick update for you guys on conservation and outreach. As you can see, the demand still remains very high for our programs in terms of a, our landscape rebate pre-inspections compared to last year, August 1st to November 1st of 2013, we only had 46, and this year, the same time period, we had 279. In addition, our Water Checkups, which is a free service where one of our staff members will come to a home or business, give input on how waters use indoors, outdoors, different rebates that are available. That is our best program. That's really how we drive everything, is through the Water Checkups, and we're pleased to see that that has really increased. It went from 195 from last year to 563. Also, the community is very aware of our drought regulations and also waste of water. We continue to get complaints via our online reporting tool and also our phone number for waste of water. We've had 114 since August.
Mr. Hart has a question.
What is the total number of customers that we have?
So, there's, Councilmember Hart, there are 93,000 customers, but we have 25,000 service connections.
Okay, that's, thank you.
What was the nature of the complaints? Is there a profile of one particular, like overwatering, something like that?
The most common would be runoff, sprinklers that are maybe misdirected or broken, and so, they're running into the street or running down the sidewalk, for example. That would be the most common, is overspray and runoff, where people see it and they track it up the street to figure out where it's starting.
Thank you.
We've also been out in the community with a lot of public information and outreach at community events. On October 18th, we had our Drought Defense Day at the Santa Barbara Botanic Garden. On October 22nd, we had a rental property showcase with the Santa Barbara Rental Property Association. We're very fortunate to have a great relationship with them, so we can reach out to property managers and owners in the South Coast area. And we also partnered with Home Depot on October 25th for a Halloween harvest. We also have had a lot of great lectures and workshops recently that have been very highly attended. On October 14th, we had a gray water lecture at the Faulkner Gallery with 120 attendees. A couple of days later, we had a hands-on gray water workshop that was geared towards professional installers, so that they can install these system, these systems on multiple properties. We limited that to 10 people for the site. The day later, we had a hands-on drip irrigation workshop, which had 60 attendees crammed into the Botanic Garden Library, so it was really a standing-room-only stand as you try to put drip irrigation together, but we're going to hold more of those because we've never had 60 people attend a hands-on workshop like that. Most recently, we had a joy of lawn replacement lecture at the Faulkner Gallery with 105 attendees, and tonight, on the next slide, in just a couple hours, we have our rainwater runoff harvesting lecture at 6 o'clock at the Faulkner Gallery.
At this time, we're going to turn the presentation over to Jill Zachary, our Assistant
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, Jill Zachary, Parks and Recreation. I have a few slides as follow-up to some of the conversation that councils had at other times related to trees and parks and, and what's going on. We were last before you with our drought plan in June and gave you a presentation on what the department as a whole was going to do. At that time, our objectives were, first and foremost, of course, to meet the 20% reduction and to do it by being strategic, looking at the key resources that we have in our Parks and Recreation System, whether it's a ball field, a recreation facility, an open space park, a horticultural area, and at the same time, trying to minimize the impact to the community. In June, we, we said we would be monitoring what we were doing regularly and that we would be revising our plan, that it is a working document, it's a working tool. At the time, we were taking our first cut effort of what we thought we should be doing, and, and since then, we have made changes and refinements. I'd like to present a little bit about what's going on in our park system, as well as, as it relates to trees, so the focus is more on those resources related to our department for today. So, for parks, landscapes, and trees, our objectives are maintain public safety and recreation value. Our ball fields are really important in the value they play, provide to the community. At the same time, protecting our resources. We have some pretty important resources in our parks in particular, that have been there for decades, and, and we want to avoid losing them to the extent possible. Our parks also need to look good to, and to be places that people enjoy because we have a high number of visitors and residents that use them, and they also provide revenue for our recreation programs and our activities, so balancing all those things while meeting the reduction. So, to do that, for parks, our focus has been on, on spending more of our water, so to speak, in our ball fields and our landscaped areas, areas of high visitor use, areas of, of maybe not so, maybe not lower visitor use, but areas that can suffer a little bit under the drought, such as where we have a lot of turf in a park like Shoreline Park, Arlo Mesa Park, scaling back our water use there so that we can use more water in other places. For trees, focusing on young trees, trees that are historic, designated historic, and those that are sensitive to drought, we put together a fairly complex plan, just looking at trees alone, and, and trying to figure out the best way to focus our, our water use on trees. So, just from the Parks Division's standpoint alone, since the beginning of March, we have achieved a reduction of 29% over last year, so that in, in acre-feet represents 45 acre-feet. We've used 109 to date. As I mentioned earlier, some areas, there's greater reductions, it could be 30 or 40%, while in other areas, it's maybe 5%, or in some cases, we're using the same amount because it's critical to maintain that resource or because of the adjustments that might be needed. I would point out, you can see, we were fairly drastic in our cutback in water in March and April. That's sort of the tail end of the winter months where we still think we might get rain, and that's somewhat similar to what we do in practice, whether or not there's a drought. We did ramp up. We had a very warm spring and summer and fall, and as Mr. Hagmark mentioned, October was a very warm month, so you'll see, we actually used a little bit more water there. It's 8% drier. We've been suffering, as we all know, from drought conditions for a number of years, and we really started taking a hard look at some of our parks with horticultural areas of great value and worry more about them and provide some more supplemental water to trees that we have in our parks. So, you'll see that change. However, if you look at it, over the course of all those months, we've still reduced our use by 29% over last year. For the department as a whole, it, we're at about 28% over last year. And lastly, before I move on to, to the next slide, if we continued out showing you where we, we usually are and what the trend is in sort of November, December, January, February, that is when we have historically saved more water because the days are shorter, it's cooler, we do hope it does rain, so we will be pulling back our water use in the next couple of months, while at the same time, taking, making sure we're monitoring and, and managing our resources as needed. So, to do that, we read our meters on a weekly basis. We're always inspecting our irrigation systems. We gather all of our monthly meter water use, and we look at it, month by month, year over year, month or year-to-date, and try to see the trends over time and look to see where there might have been a change and why that might have occurred. We are making strategic landscape and turf decisions. We're also making irrigation infrastructure improvements through our capital program. We replaced the irrigation system at Willow Glen Park. We also put in an irrigation system in Ambassador Park, so that increases our water use efficiency. And as I mentioned, hand watering of park trees is needed. For our trees, we've done a number of different things. Number one, we pretty much sat down and said, where are we watering trees? How much are we watering those trees, and how long is it taking us to water those trees? When we first started off in June, we thought we could water 660 trees, and that was our focus for our one staff person that, that does that work. We're currently watering well over 1,300 trees. We've doubled the staff resources. The focus of those, that watering activity is on young trees, so trees that have been planted in the last five years that need supplemental water to get established. Historic trees, such as the trees on Annapamoo Street, are getting watered every single month. We've also switched our watering technique, and we use a deep water probe, so we're trying to maximize the amount of water to the tree roots and minimize any potential overflow onto the street or into the parkway. And then, we recently started purchasing and installing gator bags and irrigates. We specifically developed an action plan for historic and specimen trees because of the value they are, they play in the community, and also because not all of them are on city property. There are designated historic trees that are on private property, so we've specifically reached out to those landowners and asked them if they want assistance in caring for their trees and made ourselves available as a technical resource. And Tim Downey, our city arborist, has met individually with a number of those owners. We've inspected all of the trees, and we've identified the ones that we think are clearly the most in danger of suffering from the drought, and the stone pines being pine trees are, are species that is particularly weakened by drought conditions. We've also implemented a community outreach through a citywide postcard, direct letters, presentations to different groups, and then also media outreach. So, just a couple of quick picks. Irrigates, we received just under $15,000 from the Pearl Chase Society to support the purchase of irrigates for Annapamoo Street. We've installed 25 of them. We've got 31 more on the way. One of our goals with the irrigate system is not only to improve the watering of those trees because it's a slow-release water, but also improve our watering efficiency, so if we fill those irrigates, leave and go water some more trees rather than having staff stay there. About a quarter to a third of all our staff time has been spent just watering these 72 trees. So, as you think about it, it takes a huge staff resource to make that happen. We're trying to make it more efficient. And then, similarly, the photograph on the right shows a 20-gallon gator bag. We purchased 200 of those. So far, we've installed 90 of them. They, they came in a few weeks ago, and those are on street trees, young street trees. Similar concept, instead of standing there, spending the time to water, fill the gator bag, and then move on. We have tags on everything. We're hoping that people will voluntarily help us fill the irrigates. We actually have members from the First United Methodist Church that have sponsored two of the irrigates. They're going to be filling them, putting 125 gallons in them once a month, so they're helping out. And then, we're hoping that private homeowners that see a tree with a gator bag on it will be happy to come out once a month and put 20 gallons of water in it. When you think about the amount of water it takes for a tree, it's actually not that much. If we could get to the point where residents did water the street tree in front of their house... house, even three times a year at 20 to 30 gallons per time, that would help trees under these conditions. Our neighborhood outreach, this is a postcard that we sent to all city addresses, asking people to help us help city trees during the drought, and we have had some responses. On the other side of the postcard, it does actually give a how-to, so someone could just go ahead and do it, not have to call us, and/or take care of their own trees that way, to preserve their trees and those resources. We've been asked by a number of individuals, and councils mentioned it, the Parks and Recreation Commission has mentioned it, what would it take to care for more trees? Right now, we're caring for about 6% of our street tree population with our watering system, and we're not getting to mature trees. You'd think they could survive, but they're showing signs of drought as well. We've seen more trees dying in this last year than we usually do, so we've been spending more time on removing trees as well. So we've put together some concepts for what we would do. Staff resources, that's probably the biggest cost, what it takes to go out and actually water the trees. That's equal to, that would bring our resources up to basically three full-time equivalent instead of two full-time equivalent. We've relocated one staff person already to do this instead of doing something else. We have a water trailer and we have a water truck. If we added staff, we'd need another water trailer. We have the vehicle that could pull it. And then if we wanted to really expand our neighborhood outreach and work with individuals to encourage people to just put 20 gallons of water on the tree in front of your house every other month, that takes time and effort to actually make that happen. It doesn't just sort of happen through a postcard. So we could do expanded neighborhood outreach. We could have people on the street actually going neighborhood to neighborhood, door by door, and talking to people about how to care for trees. The other thing that we've been talking more and more about is just simply improving the growing conditions for trees in parkways. In April of this year, we completed a street tree infrastructure analysis of seven neighborhoods in Santa Barbara, mostly focusing on trees that are underneath high-voltage lines that are subject to potential Southern California Edison pruning techniques that can be challenging for a tree over time and certainly aesthetically unpleasing, to try to identify which trees are currently being pruned that way, which trees are in danger of being pruned that way based on where they are, their canopy is in relationship to the high-voltage line. And then what else is going on in terms of the parkway growing conditions? How many vacant tree sites we have? Are they still valuable tree sites? Should we be removing some trees because they're not going to be pruned like a palm tree? Once it hits a high-voltage line, that's it for the palm tree. It has to come out, whereas other trees with different types of canopy. What we did find of the 5,100 sites that we inspected, about 850, 900 of them have cement in the parkway, so surrounding the tree. And if we were to just physically remove hardscape from around a tree, even if it wasn't watered, it would make more open ground for more moisture to support the life of the tree, the health of the tree. So we're putting together numbers of, if we just did infrastructure improvements alone, which would last far beyond the drought, what would that cost and where would we focus those efforts? And how would that help a tree survive? So more roots would be exposed to any moisture that happens to come its way. And then at the same time, developing long-term recommendations, looking at over the long term, how we have in our urban forest management plan to update our street tree master plan. One of the key issues we need to look at is to what extent should we be focusing on trees that are less susceptible to drought? To what extent do we focus on trees that are smaller trees, that can survive under drought conditions? Building that into our long-term planning and recommendations for maintaining the city's street tree population. So we're thinking about those things even as we're trying to manage for today. Similarly, for park care, we mentioned in early that we do make strategic landscape decisions, and we do still need to make strategic landscape decisions. We were before council, two weeks ago, with the Bath Street Pocket Park and talking about the struggle that we had there with determining, should we plant 81 plants and four trees considering the drought conditions? We've gone and done, you know, some fairly detailed analysis, and we think the amount of water that those plants and those trees would take could easily be offset if we saved water elsewhere in another park. And we're talking 750 to 1,000 gallons a month to establish the plants in this park. We've pretty much minimized the landscape as much as possible. And then similarly, Parque de los Niños, we have a CDBG grant, Community Development Block Grant, to replace the playground and do some park improvements, and it did, a year and a half ago, include a proposal to revamp the landscape and irrigation system there. The irrigation system's in pretty poor condition. We still think it's important to move forward with doing that and trying to figure out, well, what can we do in the interim to maintain the aesthetic value of the park yet stay within our need to keep our water use as low as possible and meet the reduction. Likewise, as we look forward, we're looking at other areas where we can improve our irrigation system, so more efficient use of water. Dwight Murphy Ball Field's a key area that we're hoping will ultimately be able to be funded. And then looking at the long term again, at all of our irrigation systems, where our turf is, the type of landscaping we're installing, preparing for the future, so to speak. How do we prepare now for when we're out of the drought, but we need to anticipate that at some point, we'll be back there again? Next steps, we will, with the Finance Department and City Administration, look at our department budget at mid-year and determine whether there are options to expand tree care within the city's, the department's existing appropriations for this year. So mid-year, we may come back with some suggestions about how we would do that. And then in our capital program, integrating some of our concepts related to parks and drought and tree care and tree management into infrastructure improvement projects for council to consider as part of our six-year capital program. And that concludes the remarks I prepared for today.
Thank you. I don't see any speaker slips on for this time round. One question on neighborhood outreach and helping neighbors looking at their own street trees. Have you talked with Lorraine Cruz Carpenter at Looking Good Santa Barbara? Because, I mean, there's a infrastructure right there within our own city government of a lot of people throughout the entire city who do a variety of different neighborhood improvements, and this seems like a natural addition to request some of those block captains or others. And I don't know if they've, if you've had that conversation with Lorraine or not.
Madam Mayor, we haven't had that conversation, but we've identified it as something we can do. We haven't allocated the resources to actually do that kind of work because it's currently not something was previously prioritized. But sort of coming together with a laundry list, if we were to go forward with a more in-depth neighborhood outreach effort, where would we go and what would it take to do that work?
Right. I mean, they also do the big neighborhood cleanups, I think, twice a year or at least once a year, and perhaps as part of their next one, to incorporate some of the things you're asking in terms of even education or actually doing some watering the trees. Normally, they plant trees, and I think we wanted to maybe avoid that this time around, but instead water the trees that are there so that we wouldn't have to expend additional funds, I don't think, to do so because that's already something in place, except for the water. So, you know, in terms of budgeting and so forth, I'd like to see that kind of collaboration happen. It seems like that's a natural, and there's already a infrastructure of people and, you know, an organization in place instead of starting something from scratch. And so was the additional staff resource, you had $100,000, and then I heard you say it would go from two full-time to three full-time, so really $100,000 for one person to water trees? Is that what we're, am I understanding that correctly? Because that seems high.
Madam Mayor, yes, and Councilmembers, that's, if you were to have a full-time staff equivalent, we have hourly staff as well to do that. Right now, we have a young tree care specialist and a grounds maintenance worker and hourly staff. And that brings us up to two full-time equivalent plus hourly. If we were to add that, we would have a staff person plus an hourly person.
Okay. Well, I'd like to see the breakdown of that because that still seems high to me. But if it is, it is. I mean, that's, but that just was a big number. Okay. Mr. Hart.
Well, I appreciate hearing about the flexibility, you know, the parks are using now, adapting to circumstances as they evolve and the news, good news about the Bath Street Park. I guess I'm curious about having that same kind of fresh look at replacing the Annapamoo Street stone pines. You know, there's the three missing trees. Now that we have the irrigates, I think, you know, that's one of those kind of calls that I think is worth looking at again. And then it occurs to me that if you are doing this mid-year budget, you know, considering this mid-year budget adjustment and having this kind of outreach to do the street trees, that working in hand-in-hand with Ms. Ward's team about doing checkups with these neighborhoods. If you're going to go to the neighborhood and you're going to talk about the street trees, seems like you ought to just go to the residences as well and have a water checkup. Maybe just have that as part of the package that you're doing because you're asking them to help water the street trees. There may be opportunities on their own property that they can save water to make that make more sense for them financially, and it just seems like a good opportunity to combine those two things. And it does occur to me that, you know, you are seeing big boost in the number of people requesting the pre-conservation inspections and then the water checkups and things, but it is still a really pretty small number in percentage-wise of the overall number of customers. That's why I asked the question about customers. So I'm thinking, you know, is there anything we can do to push that even more, to get more people to be doing that? Or are people just doing it on their own? They figured it out, they don't actually need our help. So I guess it's a question of, you know, when we look at these gross numbers of conservation, are we looking at people who are doing a really, really great job because they get it and they understand it, and they're conserving a heck of a lot of water? And then there are other people who have not done anything and are kind of oblivious. We don't have any data on that, and it sort of speaks to, should we be talking to those people that aren't doing anything at all and targeting our water conservation work in that regard?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, that's a good question. Of course, we can't be entirely sure where everyone's cutting back. We have seen reduced flows to Ellis Stero and the order of magnitude of about 8% lower, I believe. So it's mainly outdoors is what we're expecting, and we'll see how it continues out throughout winter, how it will be cutting back. But in terms of the rebate program, what we have been telling people and encouraging them to do is to get the pre-inspection now, but to wait until the drought is over to replant if they're replacing their lawn. So we have quite a few people who are in the waiting game. If they're making irrigation changes, that's best to do now because that's something that will save throughout the drought. Whether you're replacing it with new plants, you're going to have to use a little bit more water to get them established. So in terms of market penetration of the landscape rebate, of course, we have quite a few properties that basically wouldn't be eligible because they're already conserving all they can. They have a few shrubs, a few trees, and they handwater them or they're on drip irrigation. So that's really already a water-wise landscape. That's not something that there's a big bucket of water to capture there. And so that's what the water checkup program really helps with, is making people a little bit more honed in on how they're watering, even if they don't have some giant change to make.
So would you, what would you guess percentage-wise are the number of lawns that ultimately, ideally, would be replaced in the city compared to what people have already done? Do you even have any kind of estimate?
We're working right now on how much water we think is going to lawns currently, but we're still in the very draft stages of that because it's very hard to tell. Even with aerial images, sometimes they're taken during winter, sometimes they're taken during summer. You don't know what's actually being irrigated, what might even be artificial turf. It just looks green from the sky. So it's very hard to tell how much water is being applied to lawns and how much we can capture, but we're trying to figure that out.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Four comments. First of all, back to Mr. Hagmark's comments. One of the disappointments that I know we all feel is that when we tried to turn on the well system, it really just was not functional, and we are now scrambling to rehabilitate that. That's, I mean, I kind of reminded when the Sycamore Fire occurred, there was like an amazing number of fire engines that broke down all at once because we just hadn't been through this in a long time. So I want to make sure that we're, as we go forward, and you go back 30 years, and the well system was something that was every day. It was a much more of a, it was part of the currency of monthly operations. And obviously, that's part of what we suffered through here, is we were doing other things and we did not have, and we were saving. The good news is we were saving the water resource for the bad times. We just weren't tending to the machines that allowed us to extract that water at this time. And so going forward, in long-term water supply plan, in our management planning, to have that, have the wells, I heard Mr. Hagmark say, we're going to start pulling a little more safe annual yield perhaps out of basin one way, but somehow, tending to that, to these machines on a more regular basis is just something that needs to be higher up in our management plan, and maybe just because of this experience, it's going to be. But I'd ask that we just have that be something which is cycling through as we're funding it each year. I mean, it's just, it's money, and it's, and we're always struggling with trying to not let rates get too high, but this is one of those places where the investing in infrastructure is, just needs to keep on happening. Another point is that, on Dwight, and then to switch to Ms. Zachary's remarks, Dwight Murphy, I'm hearing, and I think it's, I'm going to be raising it when we come to our capital projects, that converting that field to turf is something that I would hope that we reach out to the soccer community and start that conversation as a way to really, to save some water in a big way. See whether there's support in the soccer community to consider that. And then I, for one, am, obviously, we're going to be watching this, the winter, carefully see how much rain we get, but I do support adding staff resources, and I also support the outreach program as a way, particularly, of course, if we're suffering with another bad rain year, just as an area where I'm supportive of that. Our street trees are just, it's such, they are such a critical resource here. And also, Santa Barbara Beautiful is another organization which plants trees and all that, and so that would be another one of those outreach potentials, which probably is already on Ms. Zachary's list, but they're also just, they're a can-do organization so that when a word goes out, when that email tree is hit, good things happen. So that could happen sooner than later, and I think some, a whole bunch of trees could, would get a little dose of water, which they might not be getting now. Thank you, and thanks for the report. It's, obviously, we're hoping for that El Nino is on the positive side this year. Thanks for your work.
Mr. Hart.
One last question I had was, when you mentioned that we are not doing the water main replacement at the same rate, because one of the reasons being that it takes water to do that water main replacement. It also occurred to me that you mentioned there was, you know, the water that's lost when the breaks occur. And have you done that cost-benefit comparison in terms of water? The amount of water that's lost from water main, an unplanned water main break versus the water that's required to do the replacement work? And are we sure that that's not still a net positive to just to be going ahead with that water main work?
Yeah. This, Councilmember Hart, at this point, the water loss from water main breaks is still small, very small in the big picture of how much water the city uses, you know, far less than an acre foot of water. So when we do have these main breaks, there may be a lot of water flowing down the street. That value is probably less than $800 worth of water. It's really more the staff time and resources it takes to get in there and repair, you know, dig up the street and repair the street has really overshadows the actual cost of the water. I think it's just a disappointment to see that kind of water being wasted. That's really more the critical aspect of that.
So is it then, then in the sense of doing the deferral of the water main work now, that's not a water conservation strategy? Or there is, that, there's very little water wasted in a break as compared to what it does take to replace the mains?
That's correct. When we replace mains, you're filling them in accordance with the regulations. You have to fill them up twice to sanitize them and dump all that water. There's a lot of water in a city block that just gets dumped and can't be reused. So it adds up when you start doing.
That can't be recycled or anything? It just has to go down the drain?
It's a difficult body of water to, yes, to recapture. You'd have to have a whole bunch of trucks lined up. It's just, it's not something feasible. And for the time being, we do have a lot of staff right now running around focused on other priorities related to the wells and keeping the wells operational that I feel like we just had to make a decision, and I feel like it not only saves water, but I think allows our staff to focus on other priorities.
Okay. I understand that. And then it's sort of a similar thing that I noticed the Gleta Water District is looking at extending the use of, using trucks to truck reclaimed water to customers that are not accessible via pipe. And obviously, it's something that's not current because we don't have the reclaimed water plant up, but are you looking at that? not current because we don't have the reclaimed water plant up. But are you looking at that as well as potentially something to do? Does that make sense financially to have those trucks serving customers like that?
To be honest with you, we are looking into it. I feel it's very symbolic, the amount of water that you actually can move in a truck is not, the cost to our city streets and environment far outweigh the actual value of the water being moved. I think I'd prefer people to just, when you buy water, I think the Gleta Water is selling it for like 15 cents or 17 cents a gallon or something. I think that our most tier-three water is right around a penny a gallon. It's still by far cheaper to use potable water than to have it trucked in. It's just the environmental impacts of trucking water around is just not there. I do want to say, though, that the other, every other community who has wells is also struggling, and we have been replacing wells. They are, I don't know if the community knows this, but wells are easily $2 million per well for a municipal well, because there's all kinds of regulations regarding how they're constructed. And so they're very expensive tools to have, and we have, we sit over a very limited groundwater basin, and so it has, certainly there's value in that infrastructure, and we have been replacing wells, certainly not at the, unfortunately, the wells seem to all be built around, they all seem to be about the same age, and so, of course, they go out around the same, all at the same time. And so, as you know, we're wrapping up Corp Yard. That was one we just replaced. We did San Roque a few years ago. We've had them in a rotation to replace them, kind of trying to stagger them, so in the future, there isn't this lump sum payment to do all the wells at one time. But if we did have all those wells operational, we still sit over a very limited groundwater basin, certainly more generous than what Montecito sits over, but it isn't, we do have restrictions on how much we can actually get out of it and, you know, for the duration of this drought.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Well, there's no motion necessary for today, so thank you again for the report, and we'll see you soon about rates, right? That's coming up relatively soon. Okay.